It looks like to me it's at 6 o'clock, so I would like to call, order, and roll call please.
Um, Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
David?
Here.
Number two is public hearing on the 2024-2025 budget. There's a 2024-2025 budget document in here, and there's the 24-25 budget hearing notice also.
Does anybody want to go through it page by page? Or do you guys have questions?
Yes.
I'd like to say something that kind of concerns the budget overall, if you don't mind. Now and still later. And I wrote it down, so it wouldn't be long. Let me start by stating that I'm here tonight with concerns about Hennessy's spending over the past years. The economy, especially for the oil industry, for many of the residents here, are involved with directly or indirectly, has rapidly declined. Budgeting is not an easy task because it in part requires using estimations and forecasting. The upcoming elections in November may likely cause financial unrest and create new variables and unforeseen circumstances. These can adversely affect the budget. I would ask that the trustees carefully consider every line item on the proposed budget and find areas where cuts and/or additional cuts can be made to help the town through the months following the election and beyond, should revenues be less than anticipated. There's always areas of waste in any budget. I have read the proposed job descriptions, especially that of the town office manager. I have not read the description for town administrator position, but it seems the two positions are somewhat overlapping, and I think there's a duplication in duties for which in effect creates a double pay position. Should we be discussing an elimination of the duplication duties or one of the positions? The garbage and water bills have been an issue discussed by many residents and those living outside the town limits who have no voting power but pay Hennessy Utility Authority invoices each month on businesses operating in the town limits. When the current trash collection agreement was entered into, it seems to have had a 3% increase in rates set to go into effect under its terms. I have not seen this agreement. In any event, why hasn't there been ongoing negotiations, or have there been, with another company or the existing one to avoid the increase in cost? We lost our twice-a-week pickup and fees increased. Now there will be an increase without additional services? What value or service does Hennessy get for the increase? If we must increase trash prices, I strongly propose that showing a copy of a current water bill would allow free access to the transfer site on Cemetery Road. Maybe some of the folks would use this free pass to clean up their homes. Most of us have had pay cuts, lost benefits, and et cetera without increasing pay. I think we should reexamine the budget and find some ways to keep from raising prices for basic services. In closing, I want to leave you with this thought. Just because we have money in the bank doesn't mean it all has to be spent. Please make wise choices with our funds. Can we not avoid increasing the trash and water bills for our residents and those businesses having owner residency outside the city limits? Thank you.
Jared, can we address that?
I think wait until you get to your resolution is your proper place to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question, Tiffany, on the streets. Says we got 219,000 in the general fund for the streets.
What pages are you on?
Two.
Three.
Special revenue fund is 19,000. And special revenue fund is 200,000. Streets improvements.
Yeah, so the streets under the general fund, that's going to be your maintenance, or your workers, your maintenance, different things. Your 19,000 is street and alley money, which is usually like your street lighting. And then your 200,000 is going to be the, like, if we want to do some street work, like a capital project.
So like, if we want to do a mission road, that's 438,000. Can we use that fund for part of that? And I've had, like I said, I've asked, I've looked for it, I've asked for it. When we did the swimming pool, did any of that self-tech go to, at all, to the street and alley fund or the street funds at all? Or is it all strictly?
No, the vote that the people voted on took half cent from, let's see, took a half cent from the emergency services, and then it raised it a half cent. So then it gave the swimming pool a full cent to pay it off, the loan.
So like on the 200,000, that every year?
Um, we have not spent, I mean, we did the drainage project, but other than that, there's been money built up in that. And so we were able to, usually it's around 60 to 70, $70,000 a year.
Because like the federal grant that we have that were, you know, that you asked us about for that?
Uh huh.
How long do you think it would take us actually to pay for that through our street and alley fund?
Through the street capital outlays? It would probably, because it would, to come up with the match money, because it's a 75-25, so it would probably be, like, every two to three years we could apply for it again and get the money.
How much, I mean, for us on our part, how long would it take us?
About two to three years.
That's the only question I got.
And that's depending on the taxes.
And we also have to remember, this is a living document. It's just because we vote on the budget now doesn't mean that we can't come back and change it with the taxes or however it is. And just because it's also here does not mean that we're going to spend it just because we have a budget. I will tell you that right offhand because we do, and we don't spend it, we don't, we don't spend it. I mean, you know, it's only because if we need to do it, then we do it. It's not just because it's budgeted. Is there any other discussion about the budget? If no other talk about it, I make a motion to?
No.
No?
It's just a hearing, this is just a hearing.
What, a hearing? So I just continue on? Okay.
May I ask one more question?
Yes.
It may be off the wall at this time, but a lot of people have asked me, when our police department, and I see in the paper who lists fines, that they do. I know that a big portion of that money goes to the court costs and all that, but how does that money break down on a fine? Where does it go?
Um, you have certain money that is required by the state. There's CLEES, there's APAS, forensic. So that's $30 goes to them. Then we have court cost of $30 that goes into the general fund. We have officer education, which is $10 per fine. And then the other fine goes into the general fund.
So it's probably 50% or less that the town gets to keep?
Oh, yeah, well, it depends on the size of the ticket because, I mean?
Well, it's a dollar fee, I see, right, you're right.
You know what I mean?
Okay.
Because you get a $50 ticket, I mean, depending on what the judge rules, you get a $50 ticket, 30 of them are listed.
Gotcha, sure.
May I ask a question concerning that? Do we get paid for those? I mean, are people actually paying those? Or do we have a bunch out that people aren't paying for the tickets that they get?
Um, well, if people don't pay their tickets, they get a warrant. And then after about six months of it being on a warrant, then we send it to a collection agency too. So we've been, we've been actually gaining a lot of money these past couple of years by the tax commission collecting on, because if you have an outstanding fine and you don't pay it, the tax, the tax commission, Oklahoma Tax Commission can take part of your refund.
They even hold up remaining your car tags if you've missed a toll pass.
Sounds like the experience.
I know, but I know someone who did. Had a $2 ticket.
Okay, number three, report from the town of Hennessy Ad hoc agencies.
Harold?
No, because we haven't met in a while. But the part that I got to ask you a question about, that's actually report number two. You know, flip your pages. Flip your page, flip your page. Report number two.
Are you on the department reports?
We're still on number three.
Huh?
We're still on item number?
We're still on the report from town of Hennessy ad hoc agencies.
All right, but on page number one and four.
It's on the minutes.
On the minutes.
Oh.
It says reported town of Hennessy ADHOC agencies. So that's why I wondered if we're going by the front page or we're going by?
Okay.
One and four?
These are the minutes from last month.
Oh, okay, all right.
I know, I know it's.
This is a new system, and we're trying to get all the key sound bits before we go live.
When you get it digital, it will all make a lot more sense because you'll click back and forth.
Because you, like, you, like, citizen comments, right up, you know, that's why I was wondering, you know, it's way down the line.
Yeah, number four is consent agenda, so it's like number two.
Yeah, so that's why I was wondering, okay.
Well, it is confusing because the, the agenda and the minutes both look the same now.
I'm a month behind, I'm good. But now, we haven't had any board meetings, and I don't think that they're going to meet over the summer. You know, so I think the next meeting, well, I understand maybe be August. So if we're denied, so we just kind of took the month, summer off?
Number four is consider the approval as consent agenda. And before I start this, I want to say if we need to pull anything out, discuss it, we need to pull it out, discuss it, and put it down underneath. We can't discuss it on the consent approval as end. Okay, so four, one is approval of minutes. Four, two is approval of the claims as followed. General fund is 59,537.07. Number two, the RSTF fund is 31,029.46. Cemetery care, the juvenile fund, the library fund. The street and alley fund is 91.51. Previous month is 2,282.65. The June board claims and the May claims. Four, three, accepted apartment reports, library, office manager, park cemetery, police department, sewer department, bank account information. Four point four, approve the resolution approving the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Four point five, approved job descriptions for office manager, water superintendent, wastewater superintendent, parks and cemetery superintendent, and street superintendent. Four point six, approved resolution approving the Kingfisher County Hazard Mitigation Plan update. And then four point seven, approve the purchase of a new copier with existing copier going to the fire station.
Do we not have a fire report in this, this month?
I have it, I just, I'll get it out to you guys. And he got it to me Monday because he was out harvesting stuff.
And I know you had mentioned wanting to say something in response on the budgets. And I just realized that resolution in the consent pocket. So if you want to say something, we might want to remove that from the consent pocket so you can talk about it.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I would like to.
But I think they kind of answered a few questions.
You want to pull it out?
Yes.
Okay. Did you hear that?
That's your minutes up?
Okay.
No, it should be easy to drag.
Supposed to be.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as a point, as presented?
With the exception of four point four.
Okay.
Four, sorry.
With the exception of four point four.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
We work together.
Okay, I was going to say, I can't drag that.
Well, and that's what I was thinking too. So I should probably do that.
Well, I have decisions.
But hang on, hang on, I'm getting there. I'm telling you, I hope this is.
That's what I was hoping to as well.
Hey, and he did.
Okay, who seconded?
I did.
Randy. Okay, Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Abstain.
Bert?
No.
Number five, town administrators' report?
You need to revisit your one item you were?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes. I need to go back up and go to four point four. The approving of the 2024-2025 budget, thank you, sir.
Now you can discuss it.
Okay.
I just wanted to address a couple of Frank's concerns on the budget. One of the things you, you said, Frank, was that our economy, everything's going up and everything is costing more for everybody. And realizing that, I just feel like it's very important for us to keep our employees up to date with cost of living increases and that type thing, which are in this budget. We have some people who have obtained licensure, like in the water department. One of them has got the highest level of licensure you can get in Oklahoma. And I just feel like it's very important that we are able to keep those people. And it's much less draining on a budget to keep the ones we've got than to retrain people. The only other thing I wanted to address was, you said something about people living outside of city limits, that own businesses in town would also have a water increase and that the water rates were more outside city limits. And that is true, they are more outside city limits. But it's not a mandate that they take water or garbage service from the town if they choose not to. So I just want to point that out and.
Let me clarify two things. One is what I was referring to, like, let's say the sewer water bills, is the residential bills that will, you know, they're going up. You know, I'd like to see some way that we didn't have to make all the increase because there's people that's having a hard time. And I don't know if y'all make allowances for that, but, you know, surely there's something in the budget, maybe. I don't know, because I haven't lined by line to see if there's enough money that we could pull out of something and use it to defer the cost of those utilities. I do think if Hennessy had a free trash day, as I call it, it's not really free because you're paying for trash disposal on your house, that you should be able to take a load of trash, so your water bill, that's a current one, and unload your trash, because otherwise you're paying for it twice, but they didn't have to come get the second load. I mean, that's just something, you know, I'm throwing out there.
So we do have a vault that they pay.
Right.
But once a month.
And that is.
And I don't, I really don't see it utilized very often, so. Sure. And I'm sure, I'm sure some people do, but I haven't seen the majority of people utilize it. Like, I really thought that they would, so.
Well, there's that, but I hate to be honest, but sometimes it's hard to tell where the throwaway and the keep piles are in some of the yards, you know. But I know when they came to my house several times, they have done excellent job of picking up every little piece of everything. There's no scraps laying around. In fact, they do a better job than the dump cans do. And on the salaries, I understand your point, but I'm just trying to think of maybe there's some other ways we could look at shaving back a little and saving these folks, either maybe go up on the water or maybe put on the trash, but not both at once?
Yeah.
It's pennies for us, but people don't know very hard.
Right. And, and I understand that completely. One, one of the problems is, of course, everything that the town uses in the water department, all the chemicals, all the materials for leak repairs, all of that has gone up. And we can't, we can't vote to raise tax because that's got to go before a vote of the people. So to offset increases in our costs, about the only thing we can do is raise water rates. And, and I, I've always been a very big advocate of not waiting till we're in a bind and raising 10 or 15%. To raise a little at a time so that it's not, I've seen the town in the past do that.
Yes.
And have a huge increase. One year, several years ago, a town board, I went on it at the time, thank goodness, but they doubled the garbage rate. And people, people just did not accept that at all.
If you can bust this 3% raise or whatever calculates out to be that you're increasing, you know, break it up into thirds over the next three years or the next, you know, so people can kind of prepare instead of like, oh, wow, next month my water bill went up.
I think the problem there, Frank, and I, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. Just like you said in the beginning there when you stood up a while ago, we don't know what's going to happen with the election. We don't know what our national economy is going to do. And if we wait and only go up a small portion now and try to vote a small portion next year, we may be, we may be falling behind and have to take that 10% increase. And I just, I don't want to see that happen. And, and like I said, I'm, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. I think we all want to make sure that we keep a minimum, minimum utility rate. I was talking to somebody that lives in a larger city and their water bill's 200 a month. And it's just an average three-person household that's not, you know, that's not anything special.
Well, we're fortunate to have a nice aquifer that's just not really deep.
It is, absolutely. So, anyway, I just, I just want to point that out.
Thanks.
The town hasn't went up in two years, 2020, 2022. They went up in 2020 and then 2022, and so this would be 2024. And I will say during the year of 2022, inflation was 9.64%. And then last year was, inflation was 4.09. So with inflation, we're, we're really not even touching that, so.
Yeah, I just, and, you know, side comment, you know, you get somebody on fixed income, they get a 3% raise on their social security, and then all of a sudden their bills go up 6%, you know. I mean, it's just.
That's why I try to keep it down to the, lower than what the government gives the, you know, the fixed income people. Plus, I will tell you also in these rates, Frank, it includes billing by the gallon. So that is going to save people money too.
Oh, that's right, we went from units to.
We went to, from thousand a gallons to actually by the gallon. So we would be able to start that too because all of our meters are in, but to, so.
Just touch on that, we, on the meters, we had some of our street water people out breaking cement and working and digging out the old meters and putting those in. And they did a bang-up job, ha ha. Sorry. But they did it, no pun intended. But they, but seriously, our water department works very hard to get the meters put in. Any other discussion on the budget?
None, sir. Still, it was kind enough to discuss it with me on one-on-one.
Fantastic.
Thank you for coming in. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And do I need to make a motion to accept?
Now you want to motion to approve the resolution to approve the budget.
I make a motion to approve the resolution, approve the 2024-2025 budget.
Second.
Roll call please.
Okay, Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes. He seconded it.
He seconded. Y'all are just going to have to say your names before. Okay. Well, then Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Jones, yes.
I apologize.
Can we just get cards?
I can't. I can't hear the cards.
She said, state your name.
There you go. There you go, hold up your little name card.
I also came in the front door tonight, too.
Number five, town administrator report?
You'll have my report. Also, Dave, we talked about computer inventory and stuff. And the IT people, they are going to be, they keep track of like when our computers are outdated. But I'll tell you, our computers are outdated as soon as we get them hooked up, so. But they, they give us a proposed when we should replace them. And so we're working with that with our IT people right now as part of all of moving to Microsoft 365.
Will the fire department be included on the Microsoft 365 integration?
Everybody.
Okay.
Number six, other scheduled business discussed, approved, denied, reject, and/or take action on the following. Discuss with possible action to award the bid on NOTA REIT grant number KF24-1, one or longer replacement project. It's in your packet. It's towards the end. Our engineer has looked at this, and there is one bid of 185,598 by Field Point Energy. They did not find good things about, they could not find things or something about them. And so they wanted to go up to the next one of Great Works Construction for 190,212 dollars. And that is our engineer's suggestion.
And it is under budget.
But it's supposed to be 311?
Well, some of these are. That's true.
So, so with that being under budget, do we use the grant money first? Okay.
That's with the REIT grant, they allow us to use all of their money first before we start cutting.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Is there going to be enough time to do this before school starts?
It's going to be really tight. I think the projected completion dates, which I think Great Works will really get in and really help us get to that point too. But it's going to be right there when finishing up right as school starts.
Is this the ditch in front of the school?
Yes. It's not the ditch, it's replacing the water line.
Cool.
Yeah.
I make a motion, if everybody's done, sorry, I don't want to jump ahead. Everybody good? I make a motion. I make a motion to accept the bid from Great Work Construction LLC, 190,212 dollars for. LLC, 190,212 dollars for REIT grant number KF24-1, water line replacement project.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I heard that that was Bert that time.
That's correct.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jones?
Let me spell that for you.
6.2, appoint new members on the planning board with terms. On the next page, it has a planning board.
Cliff, I'm going to do the motion. Do you want me to list the names? What, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Let me get a list here. All right. Library board.
Did you find it?
Planning board. I'm looking, sorry. Okay, planning board. Pointing members to planning board. Okay, here we go. I'll write it later. Anything else, Cliff?
No, sir.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint new members to the planning board as follows. Mr. Richard Hedrick, Mr. Dustin Monroe, Mr. Dustin Vincent, Ms. Rachel Rogers.
Second.
Can we just step it out?
Yes.
So those were the current members. Um, we need to add a fifth member to them.
I see there's four.
Megan Choate said that she would serve on the planning board. Um, so I mean, these are the people that we listed, Carrie, Les and Ja, no, Carrie and, hold on. Carrie and Les Cofer said that they would like the board of adjustment. And then Megan said she would serve both. But we also need to set like, um, I would suggest like the top two, um, or naming two people at for a one-year, you know, term ending 2025 and then another two for 2026 and then, um, the, the last one is 2027. That way every year we're coming in and we can either reappoint them, kind of like the library board now. We can reappoint them or we can change them if they don't want to serve anymore.
That's why you listed the current board members. We need to set their terms.
Correct.
And then we need to add one name. I'm just talking about the planning board. I'm not talking about the other one. I'm just talking about the one motion.
Right.
So I guess my question would be Cliff, Tiffany, Jared, how do I take that motion off the table?
You can amend your motion.
Amend it?
Yep.
Okay. So in other words, I need to make a motion to amend the previous motion.
I think you can just amend your motion.
Okay. What's the fifth name you guys are wanting on here? Megan Choate?
Correct.
M E A?
No, she's just M E G A N.
N G.
M E G A N. I got, I got this one. You have, I'll have to work the next one.
Okay. And by the name, we're going to.
Maxing he will.
Do, uh, Richard Hedrick, his terms end 25.
25.
And then Dustin Monroe, also 25.
25, got it.
And then Dustin Vincent.
Ready?
26.
26.
Rachel Rogers.
Got it.
26.
Got it.
Megan Choate, 27.
All right, here we go. Everybody ready for this amended motion? I'll make an amended. I'll make an amended motion to appoint members to our planning board with years of expiration as follows. Richard Hedrick, 2025, Dustin Monroe, 2025, Dustin Vincent, 2026, Rachel Rogers, 2026, and Megan, and Megan Choate, 2027.
Can I make a second the first time?
Second.
Your second still stands. You're fine with those changes.
Roll call, please. No?
Just a second. Trying to get back to where I was. All right. Okay. Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert, you didn't sound too sure there.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a little suspect. Want me to shout it?
6.3, appoint new members to the board of adjustments with terms.
I'm working on one.
Oh, you've got it?
Yeah, I've got it. Okay. I, uh, I make a motion, um, to appoint members of the board of adjustments. Uh, Richard Hedrick, uh, 2025, Dustin Vincent, 2025, Carrie Keel, 2026, Les Cofer, 2026, and Megan Choate, 2027.
You're not going to do Jamie?
Oh, did Jamie? I thought they said, somebody said Jamie backed out. No?
She backed out.
She did back out.
Oh, I apologize. I did not know that. I seconded it. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Bert seconded, yes.
Yes. Okay. Um, okay, Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
6.4, accept the library board members' terms with recommended from the library board. Lenora Ortega and Carla Van G turn in 2024. Lenora has decided not to go to another term. Carla will continue for another term ended 2027. Ginger Cox turn ends 2025. Ann Taylor and Karen Voge terms ends 2026. Karen has resigned effective June 30, 2024 due to moving out of state. As of June 30, 2024, we have two openings for the library board members. Does the town board want any suggestions from the library board? And then it says 6324 spoke with Ann Taylor and they will come up with recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any recommendations.
No, I have not.
Mr. Mayor, could we, could we as a board ask the town police department to stop yourself and Karen Voge as you try to leave city, city limits?
No, sir.
And retain both of your services?
No, sir.
But it was worth the trouble.
But I will tell you, this has been an enjoyable trip.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question. I guess I'm calling for a point of order here. Uh, I want to make sure I understand what Tiffany said. What were you asking for Tiffany? That you haven't had any nominations from the library board? What do you want to do? You want to table this, uh, to next month to see if they want, to see if they just forgot or, or they want to come up with some stuff? I, I think we might want to table it.
With the exception of, because really what you're looking at right now is, is two things. You're wanting to get somebody to fill the terms that are expiring and then you've got Karen leaving that you need to fill that spot as well. You have one person that is willing to go ahead and step up and renew for another three years. I'd go ahead and jump on that while you've got that person that still keeps you in a three-person board. That way you can move on. And then you ask them to come back with who are we going to get for the, another full term and who are we going to get to fill that unexpired term?
Yes, sir. I, I was, with my point of order, I was actually just trying to figure out what, what Tiffany was wanting to do there.
Well, we have four people, right? Lenora Ortega, Carla Van G, Ginger Cox, and Ann Taylor. Karen Voge resigned.
Lenora is not going to serve on the board anymore.
Anymore at all. It's just in 24.
When do these actually end in 24? Is it the end of our fiscal year? Oh, it's in May. Okay.
Library boards are weird. There, there are a lot of statutory little things like that. So, so yeah, I, I would tell you all, go ahead and approve the ones you have and hope they.
Otherwise, we wouldn't even have a board.
Right.
I make a motion to appoint Carla Van G to the library board through 2027.
Second, Ken.
Is there any other thing we need to do? We, we need to accept the resignation of Karen Voge.
Can I do that in the same motion?
Yeah, that, that will be, that, that will be a lawful issue out of the city.
Good. And accept the resignation of Karen Voge as much as I want to decline that.
Second.
Wait a minute. So those are two separate?
Her husband's dragging her out of the state.
I'm not sure she's going willingly.
Her husband's dragging her out of the state.
Dragging her out of the state. Roll call, please.
Okay. Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
6.5, accept the resignation of trustee Cliff Voge effective June 30, 24.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Where did it get that far, gentlemen?
Please withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Withdraw.
Nobody's going to make a motion for that. Nobody.
I don't have any more cards. Sorry.
Oh, I thought you were working.
No, I'm, I'm still in the library board over here.
I have no, I don't have any cards either and I'm not going to make it myself.
My, the library board.
Can you use your cards up, Cliff?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, you're done then.
I was defaulting to Bert that you guys have worked together for a long time. I kind of figured you might want to do it, Bert.
Make a motion to accept Cliff's resignation from the town board.
Second. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
If I can remember. 6.6, designate nomination protocols for replacement of trustee Cliff Voge. On here, there is a 2024 statutory election dates and deadlines.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to see us solicit public interest of anyone who would, uh, be interested in filling that position. Uh, I don't know if we do that by email or application that to be submitted to the town clerk. Tiffany, did you have a, you did this?
Mr. Mayor, from the last time that we had to appoint, there was a lot of discussion and so we come up with a form. So I forwarded that form to Angie. Angie put it on the website in the center of the henneseeok.org website where you can, um, kind of nominate yourself and then the emails get sent to the town clerk.
Do you have any info?
Oh, instead of an election. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's up for appointment.
I think they have 60 days or something.
They have 60 days following Cliff's date of resignation.
Christ, you guys have done good this before.
Yes, yes.
Very controversial too.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask Tiffany to run through that again. I couldn't hear what she said, sir. Tiffany, would you mind running through that again about the form being on the internet?
Yes. And the prior board, I think it was when, was it when Keith resigned? Um, they, it was just like people were letting board members know. And so there was a big old controversial part of that. And so we had come up with a form where people can, you know, for future, where people can fill out if they're interested in filing. And so I went ahead and had Angie put that on the website as a fillable form where you can print it and turn it in to the town clerk. And then the town clerk would then distribute it out to the board members.
Okay.
Are you saying we have none?
Yeah, you do.
Beck?
I haven't received any.
Oh, okay.
I have a history question now. Back when that was done, was that, was, did John Winn look at that before it was done or?
You know what? That's been several years ago. I can't remember.
I'm not, I'm not complaining or I'm just asking.
Can I interject here a little bit?
As I recall, Richard Simunet originated that form and he wanted that filled out and done. And that's as far as it got. I mean, so.
Well, I think getting the word out personally, this is my personal opinion. I think getting the word out like that is, is very good, but actually a great idea. I'm not against what you've done. Yeah, I just, I'm, you know, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to feel,
I'm not sure.
I'm interested in standardization. Did we do it the same way? Are we do, you know, consistency? I'm worried about that. I'll tell you, I'm the new guy. I remember.
You're doing it very consistent to what other communities do, that, that having a centralized location, whether it's a set form that you drop off or something where you've got a centralized place where anybody that's interested, even if it's just a handwritten letter, hey, I'm interested in that spot, at least then you've got that. And then at a, a future board meeting, you all will have all of those in front of you. All of those people will have a chance to be here for you all to talk to, to decide who you all would want to appoint.
Yes, sir. And, and to, to, to say it, one more thing and I'll hush about it. One more, the thing that I'm a little bit uneasy with, you know, I do the internet thing. I'm not real good at it, but I do it. There's a lot of people here in town that don't do the internet thing. So I, I would, you know, I'm wondering, would it be, yeah, it's out there on the website. Maybe we need to put it in Jack's paper. Maybe we need to put it in the King Fisher paper. You know, I'm just thinking out loud here. I'm not saying what I want to do with it is gospel, but just think, you know, just thinking out loud. Internet, the internet is great. I do it. I watch it. Uh, but you know, some people in Hennesee are aged out of that or never got to it. And some of them are, you know, my age or a lot younger.
Tiffany, can someone just come here in my barn or an outfit for them?
They don't keep them from coming to each one, uh, one of us. Awesome.
I would tell you still to tell them to come to town hall and drop off there. That way it all stays in a centralized spot. That keeps, keeps you all from being able to have something happen and get crossways, you know, oh, well, you didn't get mine, get mine up there. No, they all come up here. That's where they all start to, to help even out the process and have everybody do it the same way.
I personally don't want someone to contact me. I want it to go to centralized because in one of these situations, somebody did contact me two days after a board meeting and then another board member. and then another board member accused me of knowing someone was interested in not bringing that to the table, which was absolutely not true. And so I totally agree with the centralized location. And Kelly gets those, hands them out to us. If we need to call a special meeting, I would be all in favor of that, where we can discuss that.
So, to be clear, Kelly's not here. So does that mean bringing it to the counter and giving it? You can, you can accept it and then get it to Kelly. Okay. All right.
Okay, so I have a question. No, well, it's my turn.
All right.
Okay, so if I'm going to send these out to the board, does that mean I have to distribute them like I do the agendas? Where they go to Barb, and they go to Jack, and like everybody at once?
I mean, they're going to be a public record, and that's something for everybody to know. Let's say it here and now. That's a public record. You know, anybody who wants that spot will have to come here. This isn't like what you used to do with hiring people, that you get to go into executive session. It can be very uncomfortable, because it's all done right here with the camera going. You know, so that's something everybody's just got to be aware of. That's the process. That's how we're stuck doing it. Because they're not an employee, the executive session rules don't apply to them. So it will be an open record, open meeting when all of that happens.
May I ask a question now?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're not even going to consider having an election? You all want to appoint someone to the board?
We've always appointed someone until the last-
I've always taken a bath every Saturday, but sometimes I sit. So I-
I tell you, if you look at the statute, appointment is the first option. That, that's very normal. Now, do understand, and this is something else again for everybody that would apply for that to be aware of, it's only until the next election. Essentially, that's there to save costs for the town. Because if you go out and you do the election, you're going to have to pay for that separately from all of your other elections. That's going to be an added cost here. We just talked about trying to save money. So it'll be a six-month-ish period. And then it will come back up for a new election on the regular town election schedule. So it won't cost extra. It won't be an extra thing. And, and again, process that is being proposed, very normal.
And that's why we have this statutory election dates in here, so you'll know when the next election is.
Well, do, do be aware that that's your 2024 election schedule, not your 2025, so. Well, if you call the special election, chances are, I would assume, if, if it goes this way, somebody steps up that you all want to appoint, then it would wait until April, whenever the rest of the election happens, and you'll fill a seat for the rest of that term. Which I don't know if your term was set to expire then anyway, or if it was.
When is it? When does your term expire?
27.
So somebody will be running for a two-year term at that election?
If, if they had an election now, it would be just-
If you have an election now, it will be to fill the term. The appointment only goes until the next regular election.
So I got to ask you a question. Last time, we had three people come up for election. You know, in fact, it was these three. So, you know, they voted on, all, you know, and went in there. You got three votes. So-
Was it for the appointment?
No, for, like, if you had an election, you waited for it to come up to the regular election. So next time you got mine and his term coming up, his term comes up, so that seat would be by itself, these two seats would be by itself. Since his seat is longer, you know, our seat's going to be looking for a four-year, his seat's only going to be for a two-year.
So the way we ran through it kind of last time, I think, yeah, you would still have two seats that you're, I mean, I guess technically three seats, but who wants to run for a four-year term? That, then you'll have several people try to run for that, and we'll select two of them. And then you'll have who wants to run for just a two-year term. And however many people would choose to run for that, will run for that one. So, so I think this one, yeah, you would have a couple of different slots that you're electing for. But you have to be clear of, this is the two-year term. These are the four-year terms.
Can I run for both these? Mine, feet, and his?
I don't think the election board will let you do that.
So apparently, it's already a consensus of the board that you want to appoint someone. Is that the deal? I mean, I'm just, I would rather the people, I would rather the people to decide that, but that's just for your audience here.
So looking at this, the election dates and deadlines, if we waited the 60 days, we would be passed to get it on the November ballot, correct?
Right.
So it would, we would have an empty seat until January?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just making sure I was reading this correctly.
And I didn't get a chance to run all of the math out. But there's a very real chance, because you've got 60 days to make an appointment for the statute. If you don't, then you have to call for a special election. Unless that special election would occur, I think it's 120 days from the date that whatever special election you would call is set to happen. I mean, it's, it's a lot of numbers you've got to move. So there's all of a sudden a very real chance that if you couldn't find anybody to appoint, or didn't, you'll wait that 60 days, and then we do the math out from when that next election would be able to be. Now we're within the window of, we just wait until the regular election anyway. I, I just started trying to do that math earlier. And, and so, so there's a very real chance that that even happens. But that leaves you four, six months with a four, four-person, four-person board, which, you know, having an even board is never a good thing in case there's, you know, division, so.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Has everybody satisfied? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Any matter not known which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting agenda accordance with section 311-9, title 25OS. Sisters, comments? Counselperson report. David?
Yes, sir. I have one item. Tiffany, this is actually for you, man. Now, I actually think we talked about this in a, in a previous meeting. I just can't get my brain to wrap around the topic and try to remember when we talked about it. We did talk about it in the meeting, not, not one-on-one. I, I have received, I have received a couple of citizen complaints on town employees being asked to put the new time clock app or software, or whatever you want to call it, on their personal telephones.
We haven't even got to that yet.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't know why somebody's complaining. I can't remember. Can you jog my memory on what we discussed before? I think we talked about if, if we have them put it on their own personal phones, that we may have to pay the phone bill, or it might be cheaper to get them town phones, or, you know. Can you expand on that for me? I'm kind of lost on the topic.
Well, we talked about, and we talked about this in our managers' meeting.
Oh, okay.
I don't know who, it must have been a manager that came to you, because we talked about it in managers' meetings, and it was talked about, you know, personal phones. What do we do with people who don't have city phones? And so time clock, the time clock system, it actually has a time clock also, to where you can actually go to it and clock in.
Oh, okay.
So it would not have to be on their phones. That would be totally up to them.
You're not requiring it.
No, no, but they will have to be able to clock in. Their time off request will also be submitted through that. So they will have to be able to log in there and put in their time, time off requests. We're talking about putting laptops or tablets or something at each of the places. Also, one of the things that they will be able to do is log into their thing, and they'll be able to see how much vacation time they have left, how much sick time. They'll be able to get pay stubs, all of that on this. Kind of like people who use Paycom or ATM or anything like that. And I think, I know when I've seen people, they actually put it on their personal phones, because they want their, you know, their pay stubs and stuff on their device and not on a public computer. You know, just in case it saves it in them.
If it was me, my personal opinion, I would have you all put it on my phone for me. I would love to have that on my own personal phone. It's just some people are scared, or intimidated, or angry about the government being on their phone.
Oh, I know.
I mean, so just take that, you know, take that and run with it. I'm on, I'll back out of it. I just wanted you to be aware of it and-
Yeah, we talked about it in our managers' meeting.
Okay, so.
In fact- It's a really slick system. We use Paycom. And it even has a circle that if you use your cell phone, you can't clock in at your house. You have to be within a cer, you have to be a certain distance of where your place starts.
Yes, that is, this has that, too. It has GPS.
So you drive by work and-
And click it real quick.
Yeah, right. Also, I'd just let you guys know that we start training, we're going to start setting up the system on the 21st. The 21st, which is a Friday, and then Monday, we're going to finish. And we have managers' training on the afternoon of the 24th. And then we're going to do employee training on the 25th. So it's coming.
Coming real quick. Okay, are, are you going to make board members clock in and out?
No, you're not an employee.
That was a joke. That was a joke. I'm done, Cliff. Thank you.
Harold?
Cliff, I just want to thank you for serving, you know, town and industry for the last seven and a half years. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last three.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, sir. Bert, you got something to say?
Not other than that. I just-
You got a little oomph.
Randy?
I don't have anything other than-
Well, you'll be missed.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that.
Number 10, adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Second that. Roll call, please.
Left, left, one, motion adjourned.
Yes, sir. Unless I do it on the utility. Roll call, please.
Okay. Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Town of Hennessy Utilities Authority Board of Trustees, June 11, 2024, regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Number two, approval of amendments. I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a question. Isn't that item usually in the consent agenda?
Bert, can you ask that again? I couldn't hear you, sir.
And the approval of amendments is normally in the consent agenda?
I think so, yes.
Yes, I think it is.
I think the answer is yes. But since it's not, we'll do it the old-fashioned way.
We're still, we're still- I didn't realize we were going to use this, and we've been, and so things are kind of, because we're going to clear this light and let us start fresh.
I think it's going to be really cool.
It is. It's just, yes, it's taking some getting used to.
Roll call, please.
Okay, who did, Cliff did that.
Yeah, Randy seconded.
Randy did, okay. All right, Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Number three, consider approval of the consent agenda. Number 3.1, approval of claims of follows Hennessy Utilities Authority's fund, 19,11250. Meter deposit fund, previous month, 4,1982. 3.2, approval of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. 3.3, approve job, job description for water superintendent and wastewater superintendent. 3.4, approve the resolution amending the water, sewer, and garbage rates for the year 2024, 2025, and changing the water and sewer billing from thousands of gallons to per gallon. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes?
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Epstein?
Randy?
Yes.
Number four, scheduled business, discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. Discuss with possible action to award the bid on NODA REIT grant number KS24-1 water line replacement project.
I have it.
Thank you, Randy.
I make a motion to accept Grave Work Construction LLC for the bid of $190,212 for REIT grant KS24-1 water line replacement project.
Second. Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cliff?
New business, any matter not known which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting agenda accordance with the section 311-9, title 25OS. Sisters, comments? Counselperson report. David?
Nothing, sir.
Harold? Bert?
No, sir.
Randy?
I just want to say, I really thank the board. I thank the Town of Hennessy for the opportunity for me to do this. I feel very honored and privileged to have been the mayor. I want to really thank Tiffany, and I want to thank David, and I want to figure our lawyers, that we worked really, really hard on the code book, and we got all the way through the code book. And again, we need to make sure that this is a living document. It's not in concrete. But I want to thank Tiffany, and I want to thank everybody that worked on the code. And thank you very much. It's getting ready to go to the guy when it's finished, so. And thanks again for letting me be the mayor of Hennessy. Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes?
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.